Good evening, we're about ready to get started, but I just want to give you one more reminder that we have a sign-in for public speak tonight. And if you want to sign in to speak publicly, we're going to be using our sign-in sheet for the order of speaking. So if there's anyone who wants to speak publicly, now is your time to sign up before we start.
Checking the audio with the folks who have zoomed in. If you can just give us maybe a thumbs up, a signal that you can hear us at home. Is that an affirmative? Checking on our audio for folks who are at home. Oh, there we go, we got a thumbs up. Thank you. And LCTV, good to go?
Welcome to the Wednesday, July 16th. Oops. Welcome to the Tuesday, August 13th, 2025.
It's not the 13th either.
It's not. We're just all up.
It's the 19th. Sorry. Oh man, it's up here correctly. Okay, welcome to the August 19th, 2025 meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. Mass General Law allows for remote participation at public meetings until June 30th, 2027. All votes while there is remote participation must be made by roll call vote. This meeting is being recorded and aired live on LCTV. School committee members, when I call your name, please say "here" for the record. Nicole Schwannair.
Here.
Kate Bean.
Here.
Emily Hansen.
Here.
Jamie Hench.
Here.
Adam Rosenblum.
Here.
Zach Faridan.
Here.
And I'm the chair, Michaela Fitzgerald, also here. And now we begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the ideal of liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin, I'm going to address the remote participants quickly. If you intended to participate in the public speak portion of our meeting, could you please enter your first and last name into the chat at this time? And I'm just going to give them a minute to do that, and I'll spray down the names.
Seeing no entries into the... From folks zooming in for the public comment.
Recording in progress.
Okay. So it looks like we have no one who has entered their first name and last name into the chat to sign in intending to speak at our public speak. Just double checking.
Seeing none.
We won't have to...
Oh, getting a message that the audio cut out. There we go. Apologies, we had our audio muted, so I think I just need to repeat the directions.
Okay, I'm just going to repeat my message to the remote participants one more time. If you intended to participate in tonight's public speak portion of the school committee meeting, could you please write your first and last name into the chat box? So we will have a record of who would like to speak. Okay, it looks like we don't have anyone else. So just to start, we're committed to making sure that parents feel heard. And if there are still parents that feel like they need more time or information from the school committee or the district administration, we will make sure that there is another opportunity for that. I started the meeting off this way because I thought that we might, per our public policy, have to vote to extend our time. But it looks like we only have six people signed up to speak publicly tonight. So I think we should be able to move forward with our agenda. So first is correspondence.
The following correspondence was recorded. An email from Ruth Lattie dated August 13th, 2025, titled "Important Information from LPS."
Next we have approval of minutes. It's the school committee minutes from July 16th, 2025.
I move that the school committee approved the minutes for the July 16th, 2025 school committee meeting as presented.
We have a recommended motion. Do we have any comments or questions about the motion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote.
I'll second it.
Oh, second, sorry. Thanks, any comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Adam?
Yay.
Jamie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
And a yes for me too. Okay, now we are on to our public speak section of the night. So I'm going to start the public speak section by going over the rules. And that's in our policy, which is public, and there's also copies up at the front of the room if you need it. There's three minutes given to each speaker. The vice chair will be recording the time once you start speaking. When you start, the first thing you need to give is your name and your address and your affiliation to the Long Meadow Public Schools. And I'm going to now read directly from our policy some of our ground rules for speaking. All speakers must conduct themselves in a peaceable and orderly manner. In addition, they are encouraged but not required to present their remarks in a respectful manner. Speakers must begin their remarks by stating their name, town, or city of residence and affiliation. All remarks will be addressed to the chair of the meeting. Public speak may concern items that are not on the school committee's agenda, but which are within the scope of the school committee's authority. Therefore, any comments involving staff members or students must concern the educational goals, policies, or budgets of the Long Meadow Public School or the performance of the superintendent. Please abide by our policies and please avoid hate speech and profanity. William Welch.
Thank you, my name is William Welch. And I live at 25 Meadow Brook Road in Long Meadow. And I guess my affiliation to Long Meadow Public Schools is I am a former, a parent of former students. First, I want to thank you for your service. And then secondly, I want to thank you for expediting the review of why I'm here, which is for a facility use request for the high school fields to hang sponsor banners. My purpose here is not to go over the merits of my request. I believe that we articulated those fairly clearly in the request, and therefore I'm not going to repeat that. Rather, what I would like to do is really just talk about two issues that have come up in prior discussions with Dr. O'Shea on this issue, but more broadly, to the extent that they have relevance to you. The first issue is Title IX. And so funds raised by booster organizations may have Title IX relevance or considerations. And my response to that, when I've had these discussions with Dr. O'Shea, is that is not this case. The reason why we're here is an entirely gender-neutral reason. We are here because there is a Long Meadow High School policy that requires booster organizations to pay for uniforms. And that policy applies to male teams and to female teams. And we have no control over that policy once it's been instituted. So to the extent that I'm here to tell you why we need to raise funds and for what purpose, it's being driven by that policy. But more broadly, the amount of the funds, meaning we have quoted the amount of funds that we need to buy new uniforms for the high school team, is again driven by gender-neutral reasons. Number one, the cost of football jerseys and uniforms is considerable. As you've seen in the application, the quotes that we have received range from $22,000 to approximately $40,000. And once again, we have no control over those prices. And compared to other teams, some may be comparable in terms of uniforms, but for many others, our costs are just multiples of what other teams face. And then the other gender-neutral reason for the cost and why we need to raise these funds is because of the size of our roster. We are probably two to three times higher than many other teams, if not many more than that. And so those two gender-neutral reasons are really driving, A, the considerable cost, but B, the need to raise funds. The second issue is what I'll call logistics. And so in prior conversations with Dr. O'Shea, we have talked about...
You have like less than 10 seconds left of your time, just to let you know, so finish your sentence.
Thank you. Ensuring that we remove the signs that we want to put up. And my short answer to that is you have the power to revoke approval if we don't do what we say we're going to do. And I think that is sufficient to ensure that we abide by, you know, the conditions and the promises that we made in our request. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'm happy to field them, but otherwise, I appreciate your service.
My name is Kurt Friedman, I reside at 24 Ridge Road, Long Meadow. Good evening, Long Meadow School Committee. I have lived in Long Meadow since before I was born and completed grades K through 12. I attended Glenbrook and was a member of the class of 1973, "Go Bulldogs." I have firsthand knowledge of busing as I was bused from Primrose Drive to Glenbrook for three years. For 33 years, I've been a registered professional engineer in practice in 23 states and work as a forensic engineering investigator across the country, as well as instruct renewable energy as an adjunct professor at a local engineering university. I am tremendously grateful for the professional and academic opportunities enabled in part by my public school education in Long Meadow. My sons have also attended grades K through 12 and are each highly accomplished professionals. My wife, in blessed memory, was a speech and language pathologist and previously contracted with the Long Meadow Schools. I have previously supported the renovation of Blueberry Hill, Wolf Swamp, and Center Schools. As co-chairman of the Long Meadow High School Task Force Committee, I helped lead the renovation of Long Meadow High School to its present state. Our LHS building team, as supported by the Long Meadow School Committee, actively worked to avoid decisions that would adversely affect abutters or create an unreasonable financial burden to our community. Although multiple architects recommended a brand-new high school on Russell Field, these recommendations were rejected out of respect for Long Meadow. My direct experience taught me there is nothing positive about busing. It extends a school day, interferes with participation in school activities, and can create time conflicts with family and homework studies, especially during inclement weather. An 11- or 12-year-old does not have the independent transportation options of a high school student. A local neighborhood middle school is a tried and proven option. I feel that the proposed combined middle school is fundamentally flawed for the following reasons. The project conflicts with sustainability, the Long Meadow Long Range Plan, as well as professional engineering standards. The project will... ...fields. The project will lessen the quality of education for the majority of our students. The project will maximize bus and vehicle traffic and cause unresolvable traffic gridlock. The project will be financially burdensome for our community, and the project will lessen property values for many of our residents and homeowners. Renovate Glenbrook Middle School, renovate Williams Middle School. Sometimes, less is more. Let us work together for the best interests of our Long Meadow community. Thank you.
Teresa DiGiulio.
Hi, my name is Teresa DiGiulio. I live at Eight Woodside Drive here in Long Meadow. And my affiliation is I have had former students in the Long Meadow Public Schools. I just want to start by saying that we have been canvassing the Glenbrook/Wolf Swamp area. And this has been for like about five to six weeks now, once a week. While canvassing, some people have noticed, I mean have voiced, that they are in... They are going to be voting for the combination of the middle schools. But in my opinion, I believe that while canvassing, it was what we found, about 90% of the feedback that we received was that people in the Glenbrook neighborhoods did not want the merger. They did not want the combination of the middle school. They want their middle school to remain in their neighborhood. They want renovation over consolidation. We spoke to one woman while canvassing. She was extremely upset. She said she didn't know about the issue. Still, to this day, people do not know that this is even a thing. She is just finding out by us canvassing. We told her we were really sorry that we were the bearers of the bad news. This is what the town is proposing, we told her. She said, "I'm an alumni of Glenbrook Middle School. I bought a house here two years ago. I have young children and moved back to this area so that I could give my children the same lifestyle and upbringing that I had." She was really upset. We came upon another person canvassing who was a Realtor, still on that side of town. He said in his opinion, "Home values will dwindle 10% to 15% if they lose their middle school." We have documentation from the National Association of Realtors that support this claim. It is in my opinion that by allowing this merger to happen, you are all knowing, or reasonably should know, that you are disparaging the Glenbrook/Wolf Swamp side of town and creating a traffic nightmare for the Williams Middle School side of town, giving appearances that the haves and have-nots. Please consider your choices as it affects the town in entirety. And I just want to say, from the Merriam-Webster's dictionary, the word disparaging is an adjective, and it means to belittle the value or importance of someone or something, and you're disparaging that side of town. Thank you.
Bill DiGiulio.
Good evening, my name is Bill DiGiulio. I reside at Eight Woodside Drive here in Long Meadow. I am a parent of former students in the school system. And I would like to take this opportunity to speak also to the proposed new middle school that the town will be voting on on September 9th at the special town meeting. In that regard, I would like to point out that Long Meadow has a long history of renovating its schools. And I am a strong proponent of renovating the two middle schools, not consolidating them into a single mega-middle school. I found it interesting to learn recently that both the Glenbrook and Williams Middle Schools are actually older than all three of the elementary schools in town. Center School was built in 1921 and renovated in 1999. Wolf Swamp was built in 1956, renovated in 2002. And Blueberry Hill Elementary was built in 1957 and renovated, added on to, in 2003. There was no uproar at the time to tear down these buildings and construct new elementary schools, and a renovation was done to all three buildings. I would like to add that the high school that we're in is also older than the middle schools, having been built in 1956. The renovation addition that was done in 2012, 2013 resulted in this beautiful and updated building. There was no uproar to tear it down and build a new one across the street on the Russell Fields. In fact, that option was rejected. This building is a testament to the fact that a renovation addition can indeed transform an aging building into a modern and updated school. With this history of renovation, I don't see why we cannot do a comprehensive renovation to the middle schools, which will maintain our long history of neighborhood schools and maintain property values in the Glenbrook and Wolf Swamp neighborhoods. This allows more students the opportunity to walk and bike to school. This in turn reduces the number of buses required, saving the town thousands of dollars, and evenly splits the traffic generated between the two schools instead of creating a traffic mess on Williams and Bliss. I think a consolidated middle school is a disservice to the families who live in the Glenbrook and Wolf Swamp neighborhoods. Families who moved there, thinking that their kids would be able to walk or bike to Glenbrook Middle School, will now be forced to put their kids on a bus or drive them to school. I am in favor of a comprehensive renovation, not a consolidation. Thank you very much.
Cameron Burke.
Hi, I'm Cameron Burke, I live at 25 Woolworth Street. I am a former student at Blueberry Hill School, Williams Middle School, Long Meadow High School. None of the buildings, aside from Williams, are anything like they were when I was here. Most of the high school has been torn down when it was added on to. I am here tonight, I'm trying to encourage people to come out to town meeting and hopefully vote yes for the school building project. I believe that our current buildings fall short of the modern education standards. The classrooms are undersized and lack dedicated steam space. One unified school improves coordination of teaching, electives, and extracurriculars, expanding offers and eliminating redundancies. A larger, more connected student body fosters stronger peer networks, clubs, and activities. First-class education prepares our future leaders, innovators, and skilled workers who will strengthen our community and economy. One school creates better community for students of all abilities. The state funds new construction more generously than renovations. Renovating both outdated and out-of-code schools will cost us more. A new middle school signals how much we as a town value our education and invest in our future. A new school will strengthen our standing at a top district in the region, helping maintain or raise property values. It fosters a knowledgeable, capable population and shows our children that the community prioritizes their growth. I also fully supported the Adult Center. I think everybody in town deserves to have safe, accessible buildings that we currently don't have right now. Another thing to address, the busing. I think busing is the answer to a lot of working parents' woes, especially at this age where kids cannot just ride their bike to school, especially through the winter. Having a known time that their children will be able to leave for school is really important to a lot of people. So, thank you.
Josh Labine.
Josh Labine, 78 Farmington Avenue. I am on the middle school building committee. I'm chair of the select board, I'm also a parent of two elementary school kids and one middle school kid. I first wanted to start off by saying, I know there's a lot of talk about the middle school building project, I just wanted to thank the administration and the school committee on their openness and compassion with the other issue that a lot of people want to talk about in town right now, the middle school librarian. It's an awful situation, and it's continuing. But I hope that the openness that we've seen and the compassion you're seeing for our students continues, so thank you. I wanted to address the middle school building project. It seems like we're all starting from the point where we agree that our schools are... Those schools are out of date. Middle school, they're both, both middle schools are very old, 70, 60 years old. They need updating. If you start from that point, there's only one way to go. We have to have one school from a fiscal standpoint. We simply cannot afford to renovate two schools. We can maybe get paid, we could get paid back to renovate one school by the middle school building authority, I'm sorry, the mass school building authority. But we could not then afford to do the other school until we got into the program again. The budget's very tight, I work on it every year. Nobody knows the budget's tighter than the school committee, because you're the bulk of our budget. So you know that we do not have money to play around with. We can't ask our residents to pay for two schools. So if you agree that our schools are out of date, opponents and proponents both think that, we have to consolidate, we have to do one school. If you want to see real estate values in Long Meadow drop, there's one guaranteed way to do it. Why do people move here? There's one reason, it's our schools, our education, our belief, and our support, and our students. And if people don't want to move here because they think that we are leaving behind kids in a really important time developmentally, they will stop moving here. And that will drop your real estate values. So from a fiscal standpoint, which is the way I have been coming at this, there's only one choice. Thank you very much.
All right, that's the end of our sign-up for in-person public speak. I'm going to throw it out one more time to the remote participants if there's anyone who wants to speak publicly during our public speak portion. All right, we have no business with guests tonight. So next on our agenda is school committee announcements and recognitions. And I will start with my chair. Good evening to the Long Meadow Public School community, our staff, students, and families. First, I want to recognize that this has been a challenging time for our district and for our whole community. Like many of you, I have found it very frustrating and upsetting to read, hear, and process the recent news, not only as a parent, but as someone who deeply cares about children and students. I am grateful to all who have reached out to the school committee and to me directly to engage in these important conversations. Please know that we have been working diligently, and we have been making no assumptions, and we will continue to do so for as long that is necessary. As always, and a reminder, the school committee regularly receives and responds to correspondence from parents in the community, and your voices matter to us. On another note, as summer draws to a close, we want to warmly welcome our Long Meadow Public Schools community back to a new school year. I wish every student, staff member, and family a happy and healthy start to the 2025/2026 school year. While the summer did really fly by, so many people in our district have been hard at work, preparing classrooms, supporting staff, and ensuring our schools are ready to welcome students back with care. I'm especially looking forward to the smiles of students as they return and ride around on their bikes in the sidewalk, and the joyful noise of our classrooms and hallways, and the buzz of the energy that makes our schools the absolute heart of this community. And so for a final note, I just want us all to remember that our strength as a community is not measured only in the good times, but how we protect, support, and lift one another up during hard ones, especially when it involves children. Every child in Long Meadow deserves to walk into school each day feeling safe, supported, and inspired. Next, do we have any other committee member announcements or recognitions?
Sure. Not necessarily pertaining to the school committee. I just want to wish a congratulations to the Scottish National Rugby Team on celebrating 100 years at Murray Field in Edinburgh. Wish them a great next 100 years. Wish them a great next 100 years.
Thank you for your announcement, and congratulations. Next, we have our report, so we'll start with our superintendent report.
Sure, thank you. As Michaela mentioned, obviously, as we worked through a really troubling, disturbing personnel matter, it's been a trying time for our families, for our staff, for administrators who are assembled here tonight, and I'm grateful for that. And there's some, it disappears later on in our agenda, so we can more fully address it at that time, but it certainly has been a real challenge, and our commitment is to, as Michaela mentioned earlier, to continuing the conversation, to continuing to look into this, and to make sure that we are addressing it firmly and openly and fully cooperating with law enforcement on this, on this really troubling matter. So, I know it comes up later in our agenda, but I wanted to kick off my report with that. On a lighter note, agreed, looking forward to kicking off the school year. This is the time of year where I always like to thank the unsung heroes of Long Meadow Public Schools, and that's the tech staff, the clerical staff, the custodial staff, the maintenance staff, the folks that are working quietly behind the scenes to get our offices and classrooms ready. So, a shout-out to those teams for preparing our buildings and our classrooms and the offices. Everything's coming together, and we're preparing for the arrival of new staff tomorrow. We have a new staff orientation, and so we'll have the chance to welcome them and to orient them to Long Meadow Public Schools. Three days of professional development, and then the students come back on the 26th, so we look forward to welcoming students in grades one through 12, and then our kindergartners join us on a really special day on the 27th, though. Always one of the most exciting days of the year to welcome our kindergarten students especially, so things are wrapping up, schools are busy, many teachers are back, they're in their classrooms, they're getting things ready. They put in a lot of time over the summer, and I think sometimes they don't get enough credit for all the time that they do put in over the summer to prepare classrooms and prepare instruction. So, we're ready to go, and it's been great to see the kids out in the fields. Athletics started this past Monday, and they'll be gearing up for competition real soon, so looking forward to kicking off the school year.
Thank you for your report, Dr. O'Shea. Now, we're moving on to additional reports, so we have LPVEC. Do we have any update?
So, I'm attending my first meeting tomorrow.
Oh, that's exciting.
And then my first is, I think, in November.
Oh, okay, good to know. All right, next is SEAL, and I have an update from the SEAL. So, just for those of you who are tuning in and don't know, SEAL is the Special Education Alliance of Long Meadow, and I'm the represent, school committee representative. So, they asked for me to read a brief statement about one of the issues on our agenda and coming up at the town meeting on September 9th, the vote for the new middle school project, which has also been brought up. So, this is from SEAL, I'm reading their update. "The Special Education Alliance of Long Meadow, SEAL, supports the new middle school project. The updated facilities and thoughtful design will provide an inclusive and supportive environment for all students, particularly those with emotional, behavioral, and other disabilities. Features such as improved lighting, modernized classrooms, and an overall layout created with accessibility in mind will better meet the needs of our special education students and ensure that they can learn in an environment that is designed for their success. SEAL commends the town's commitment to building a middle school that reflects the needs of all learners and believes this project will positively impact students and families for many years to come. We also invite families to join us at our upcoming Bowling Day on Sunday, September 28th, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at Shaker Bowl in East Long Meadow. This event will be a great opportunity for families to connect and build community together." Next, we have Energy and Sustainability.
Thank you. The Energy and Sustainability Committee met on July 24th and again on August 14th. I was in attendance for the July meeting but was unable to attend in August. I will share updates from the August minutes at a later date. In the July meeting, we covered a variety of topics related to the town as well as our schools. For the purpose of this report, I'll highlight a few things that were applicable to the schools. The committee is interested in having a member of Energy and Sustainability appointed to the new advisory role on the Middle School Building Committee and recommended Greg Link. The committee has reached out to Armon Ray and Superintendent O'Shea to get an update on the bill, to understand if Greg concerns some capacity, and to also understand how the Energy and Sustainability Committee can help with the overall middle school building project. They also have questions around the installation of solar panels and artificial turf versus natural grass. These topics will be discussed in a future meeting. The committee wants to raise awareness on car idling, and met with Superintendent O'Shea. They aligned on a messaging approach emphasizing health benefits when idling is reduced. Superintendent O'Shea will send out emails to families about idling, and the committee has been working on an infographic to share. Another committee member is going to reach out to Purple Air, an air quality sensor company, to see if they will donate sensors or if there are grants available. These sensors can be installed around schools to measure air quality where idling is likely to happen, such as the car lines. And our next meeting is September 11th.
Thank you, Emily. Do we have any additional reports?
Yeah, I could just briefly, I just am happy to announce that the Long Meadow Public Schools will be offering a breakfast program starting this year. It will be free to all students. It might take us a little time to kind of get our feet under us in terms of our operation. Our plan would be to offer grab-and-go prepackaged meals, so we get a sense of how many students will be participating, but it will be offered in the middle and high school, in the cafeterias, at the elementary schools. It'll be offered in the main entrance on a cart as students enter the building, and we're going to be working with elementary principals at possibly adding a second location in the school if the numbers warrant it. But it's new this year, and so we're glad to offer this as something to our students to support them in their learning. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is student representative report, and I'll take a minute to say that our new student representative, Ms. Danica Shea, will begin at our next meeting on Monday, September 8th in the fall, once school starts, so we look forward to welcoming her. Next is our subcommittee reports, and we have no reports from finance, policy, or curriculum, so we will move on to new business, and our first matter of new business is the district's response to criminal matter, the criminal matter. So, do you want to go ahead?
Certainly. So, as has been noted, a really troubling, disturbing, angering, frankly disgusting situation, and it has been our intention to address this openly and firmly. We have had two public information sessions, one last Thursday, one last evening. Considerable amount of communication has gone out to families about this situation, and we'll continue with that effort. I just want to note that, you know, and we've said this in the public information sessions, that I'm aware of, just to be real clear, I'm aware of no complaints that are related to the behavior that this individual was arrested for. I'm aware that of a situation involving a personal dating profile, it's a matter that we investigated, it's a matter that we took action on, we took appropriate remedial action on, and sort of whatever story might be gaining traction around that is simply not true. And, you know, we have no reason to believe that that situation is any way related to the behavior that this individual was arrested for. I'm really appreciative that our administrators have been involved in addressing this with such openness and with such care and with such firmness, and they've joined us here tonight, and it's at a very, very busy time for our administrative team. They're working hard on finalizing schedules in their schools and welcoming teachers for the new school year and communicating with families. So, for them to be here tonight, I hope it's a sign of our seriousness and how grave this situation is, and they have been great partners, I appreciate the support that they've provided. Our intention has been to get resources and information to families, and so that has begun. We will be communicating with middle school families and high school families especially about how we intend to open school and how we intend to remind kids that schools are safe places. We intend to remind them of who the trusted adults are in schools, that they can reach out to administrators, counselors, school adjustment counselors, nurses, teachers. It's really important that kids have that sense of safety, that sense of security, and that's something that we will continue to remind them of, and because that is clearly tied to, their sense of safety is tied to their learning for sure. And so, having said all that, I would reiterate what we've said publicly many times, and what we've communicated to this community, is that it's our intention to look backward at everything that's happened by using an independent firm to take a look at the record, to ask important questions, just to make sure that there's nothing that we missed along the way, and we're prepared to act on the findings of that, of the firm that is engaged. It'll be an independent, third-party firm, not connected to Long Meadow Public Schools, who will look at this situation and will act on whatever the findings are, and will act and grow and learn as an organization based on, based on that report as well. I appreciate the leadership of the school committee, the sound advice and counsel that I've received from the school committee on this matter. We've been in regular and direct communication, and, you know, the school committee, more than any other body, understands the significance of this, of this issue, and I know that when the time is right, we will also take a look at our policies and practices and protocols, matters that are within the purview of the school committee to make sure that we are, you know, continuing our efforts to create safe learning environments for kids. So, our work continues on this. We are at the, still at the early stages. We will continue to work openly with law enforcement. I think that has been the intention of the school committee, is that we would work with great cooperation with law enforcement agencies. They stood shoulder to shoulder with us at the two public information sessions, and again, I think a kind of a reflection of the combined resolve that we have to address this in ways that are good for kids ultimately. So, welcome community conversations, I welcome phone calls, I welcome questions, I welcome concerns. We have provided the community with contact information, should they have information about this case. That is, that's a contact information directly from the FBI, it's posted on our, on our landing page, on our homepage, our website, and so we'll continue to work with law enforcement in the days ahead, so. Again, so appreciative of the way this community has come together, this is a strong, resilient community, it's a community that is, that prioritizes the safety of students and kids, and so it has been, in many ways, it's been a very sad situation, but to see the response of this community and to see how they have once again rallied to support children and stood for the safety of children has been, has been nice to see. So, I'm happy to answer any questions the committee might have, and I know this will continue to be a topic of conversations at the full committee and with subcommittees in the days and months ahead.
Thank you, Dr. O'Shea. I do.
Okay, it's a question.
Yeah, go ahead, thank you.
Marty, have we started to identify any independent review companies?
Yeah.
And is the school committee going to engage, or is the, is the school department going to engage a third party?
It's, so it'll be a third-party review. We have with the chair, we've spoken to our attorney on that, it's something that, it's a service that I can engage directly, but we've gotten some recommendations from the legal counsel that represents the school committee on some firms that we can reach out to.
So, the school committee is engaging?
The school committee, I think, in terms of shaping the scope of that investigation, that's something that I would definitely be in touch with Michaela on, but the recommendations for the firms that we might choose from, those recommendations have come from the legal counsel representing the school committee.
Okay, and what is our timeframe, I mean, in terms of engagement?
Yeah, as soon as possible. I'd like this to be thorough, but I'd like to engage the services of a firm very, very quickly. But it's a, there's a three firms, the names of three firms that we've received that we'll want to sort of that interview and talk to.
Are we as a committee going to bet, or you?
It was, as we discussed it with the legal counsel, it was a service that I could engage directly.
Okay.
But the report would be, you know, fully available to the full community and obviously the committee.
And this was recommended to me also from our legal counsel, that this was the best and quickest way to conduct a third-party investigation.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I just wanted to point out one thing that Dr. O'Shea said, I feel like you can't really see it here if you're from home or if you're watching live, but almost every administrator and central office employee is here present tonight in the room, and Summer on, I can see on the, on the Zoom, so I feel like that just says a lot about how seriously and dedicated our, our staff is to making improvements and showing up, and that's what it is. You show up and you listen and you, you move forward for the kids. So, with that being said, we also, I did have spent most of my days on the phone with my new best friend, the legal counsel for the school committee, and Nicole, the vice chair, and I spoke with her at length and collaborated with her to draft a joint statement for the school committee. It is in your folders, and it was shared with you all. I am going to read the draft statement, and then we can discuss as a committee. School Committee Public Statement. "We are so proud of the superintendent's response to the recent employee issue. We certainly support our dedicated and hard-working educators and staff. We are absolutely committed to putting safe, student safety first, and this committee stands ready to respond to any policy review or changes that arise during the course of the third-party investigation." So, that's the draft that we worked with the legal counsel on. Is there any questions about it or comments?
I think it was well-written.
Thank you. Anyone? Okay, then I would also recommend a motion.
I move that the school committee adopt the school committee public statement as submitted in folders and release for public statement.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Big second.
All right, now we'll vote. Adam?
Yay.
Jamie?
Yes.
Neville?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
And a yes for me, too. So, now we're going to move on to our next piece of new business, and that is the middle school building project. So, I, I asked Marty to share the information about the project cost data before we discuss and have a possible motion about the town warrant article, so he's gonna start this piece of new business.
Sure. And I, I know they're too polite to get up and leave, so we can invite our administrators to, they have lots going on to get ready for the start of school, so thank you all for joining us tonight. You're welcome to stay, too, but. For the benefit of Mr. Henshaw, always counts the number of slides that I have on my power play, this is a one-slide, a one-slide presentation. And so, this is, this is clipped from the schematic design submission that went to the MSBA, and it shows the total project costs associated with three of the options that were. And it shows the total project costs associated with three of the options that were explored by the middle school building committee. Option 1A, a base repair to Glenbrook. Option 1B, a base repair to Williams. And then the chosen option, building new at the Williams site. And this is information that's been publicly available for some time. And of course, we've talked about the educational advantages. We've talked about the traffic mitigation strategies and trying to address any concerns of the neighbors. But I thought as we, as we approached the September 9th town meeting, and in order to ensure that this committee, you know, is in a position to make an informed decision on the, whether or not to support the warrant article, I thought it'd be a good idea to share the, the total project costs associated with these three options. And I would, I would note that the total cost of the, the two base repairs would exceed the total cost of building new at the Williams site. So, you know, at a, at a very basic level, that, that's a real simple way of thinking about the fiscal advantages of this proposal. And I would note that with regard to the Glenbrook base repair and the Williams base repair, as the committee knows, as the community knows, it was only Glenbrook that was selected by the MSBA. So we really have a Glenbrook project that we use to explore the advantages of consolidation. And so right now, if, if the proposed solution were to fail, we would get back in line with the MSBA. And getting back in line, I don't have a crystal ball, but it takes years to get the attention of the MSBA. And so were we to, if this solution were not advanced and we had to get back in line and we wanted to do the base repairs to the two buildings, you have, you're waiting a number of years just to get a Glenbrook project, and then you're waiting another significant number of years to get in line on a Williams project. And at the end of the day, the base repairs don't offer the educational advantages that we've identified for months and months and months. And so you'd be left with buildings that were repaired and up to code, but would not transform education the way we would want a project to. And so it's a, it's a less, it's less costly to build new at the Williams site, and it certainly doesn't have, the base repair projects would not have the advantages that building new at the Williams site has. The other thing I would note is that we don't know what the MSBA's participation in a base repair project would be. We do know that we wouldn't achieve the same MSBA reimbursement points as we are on a new project because it wouldn't have the, the energy efficiency advantages that a new build would have. So I think, I just wanted to highlight this. I feel like, you know, maybe this has not been a prominent enough part of the conversation because this community is really excited about all the educational advantages that the project has for kids. So I just wanted to underscore this as, as the committee prepares to talk about the warrant article that is in front of residence on September 9th. So happy to answer any, any questions that anyone might have on this or any other aspects of the project.
Does anyone? Emily?
Have, have, when we've had discussions with the public, have we approached it from this breakdown that, you know, if we would have to, we can only do Glenbrook, we'd have to wait years to do Williams. It would cost more, just looking at the numbers, it costs more just to renovate the two. We won't get reimbursed the same amount. Have we had that in the presentations?
It has been part of the presentation. I'd say so. And sort of, and I think that message is resonating with folks. You know, we have made this information available to families. We have a series of short videos that sort of present information on the fiscal advantages, the educational advantages, and then some of the facility-related issues. So we have, as you know, hard to get folks' attention in 2025, but I think we have pushed this information out. This, these figures go back several months now. So, and it has been part of, I know it's part of a presentation we made to the select board back in May, I think it was, and to the school committee.
I'd also point out that construction costs are increasing, so these numbers are definitely going to increase if we delay, if we choose to renovate one versus the other.
Right. Yeah. Construction costs aren't going to.
They don't come down.
Decline.
What, it's not getting cheaper?
Nicole?
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo a little bit and expand on what Dr. O'Shea had said, which is that I think there is occasionally an understanding that we might be given a three choices kind of scenario at the upcoming town meeting, and we're past that. There's not a question of if we are looking to pivot and do a renovation at Glenbrook. The MSBA pipeline projects are, are very clear and delineated process. And where we are in the MSBA pipeline is that right now we have approval for us to continue moving forward with option 8A, which is that combined Williams-Glenbrook middle school project. If we choose not to do that, we go back to the starting line again in the process of bidding and trying to get started again, and/or we bear the costs fully as a community. There is not, there is not an option at the moment to decide to do a different version of this project. It would mean restarting the project. So there has been a lot of information out there, and there's more that continues to be added as we move forward in the project. The FAQ page has grown exponentially even just over the last few months of summer. And I know that there are a lot of people on that middle school building committee and on the school committee and on the select board who have had lots of, and continue to have lots of availability for anyone who has questions. If there's anyone who needs extra information, if you're having a hard time finding something on the website, if there's something you'd like to see more charts on or more data on, there is a lot available as the years of this project have gone by. So please don't hesitate to reach out to people if there's anything you're wondering about.
Thank you, Nicole. Nicole is, represents us on the middle school building committee.
Along with Kate.
Along with Kate, sorry. Yes, thank you. Jamie?
Yeah, and I'm just trying to remember back on all the different meetings we had, but if you can just remind me, Marty, but my number, my number one thing was voting for the, you know, one school was fiscally because it's a significant amount of money. But my second, second thing during that meeting, why I voted for that back in that point when we had these discussions, I don't even know how many times. This feels like a budget discussion where we have the same conversation over and over again. One school creates no disruption for the next three years of the children for, that are in the middles, both middle schools, which was my number two of like, okay, so you can build a school and not disrupt the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders for the next three years if both of these schools keep them in there. And then one year we consolidate them was the other, like sales. That's correct, right?
Absolutely.
Because we're not, but if we do one school at a time, we're completely disrupting Glenbrook. Then we're going into this process again, then we're going to do Williams and completely disrupt Williams. Those children will not be in their classrooms. They will be in some trailer outside where we're making a bit, a mess of the campus, correct?
No.
Okay. That's why, so that was my two, was like, okay, it's way, way cheaper, way disruptive, and it's a better educational opportunity with less costs, creating more opportunities for kids. It's kind of like the, the third thing, correct?
Absolutely.
So that's what I thought, just remembering back as to what it was. I mean, so I just look at it as that disruption for three years worth of kids who are going to be in these schools that will never even be in this new school, disrupting their education for the future education of, I mean, I don't think that's fair either.
You're one shot at middle school.
I mean, those kids, you know, I don't think that's fair to those kids going into middle school, so.
Tough years too.
Yes. I mean, so.
Any other questions? I do, I have a question. As somebody who, every year we go and we tour the schools beginning of the year and the administrators tell us about the buildings, and so knowing even these buildings like Blueberry and Center have very expensive things that need to be replaced when you do replacements, and knowing that, again, like you said, this is our one shot with the MSBA right now and we've come this far, when, is there a consequence? What would be the impact if we voted, if the vote didn't go through and we had to get back in line? What kind of impact would our, what would the reputation of our school district be to ever even get back in line if they came this far with us and then we didn't? Do you know that information? Is that?
I think there's a couple of answers. One, from, from the MSBA perspective, you'd get back in line and you'd have to resubmit a statement of interest on one or both of the schools. And ultimately, they're only going to select one project, right? And so I think we would be hard-pressed to convince the MSBA to reengage. We'd have to make a pretty strong case if this vote failed in September. And so I think we would be, and, and clearly the repair, I think one thing that everybody agrees on, opponents, proponents, is that the scale of these repairs really goes way beyond what the town could reasonably be expected to carry on its own. You're really not going to fix this without the involvement of the MSBA. So that's one answer. The other answer is I'd say when communities step forward and they support building projects, I think it has the effect of, you know, of rising the tide of all boats, that it has a really positive effect on the community's appreciation for education, has a positive effect on teaching and learning. Our educators do a great job in some buildings that have, that are at the end of their useful life, but I know they could do even more wonderful things in a new facility. So I think with the, I think the, you know, if this vote were to fail, getting back in line with the MSBA, you know, to Emily's point, waiting five years or so to address the needs of maybe one of the buildings.
And is that usually the average wait in line time period?
Usually about five, yeah.
About five years, so we would have to.
Yeah. And that might even be generous. That might even be, that might even understate how long you'd wait, given how long we waited for this project. And then you're waiting another certain number of years to address the second building. And meanwhile, and one thing I do know about, you know, this community values kids having a similar experience as they make their way through our schools. To have one school that was fully repaired and another school that was waiting in line, it would create some disparities that would be really difficult, I'd say, for us.
In ten years, who knows what the condition of that school would be at that point.
Right.
And meanwhile, you're spending a lot of money to keep that building online, you know, whatever, both buildings, you're spending money to, I mean, the roofs are at the end of their, of their life, you know, at Glenbrook, 1994. So that alone, you know, that's a project that you can't wait on, you know, ultimately.
And no, and I just worry, kind of to Jamie's point, one, this is less disruptive, and two, like, I worry if we don't take an opportunity to receive state funding, now we're going to fall continually behind with our other buildings too that are like, are going to need replacements. And so we can't go backwards. We have to move forward for what's best for all the kids and less disruptive and a better learning opportunity. I myself got to attend a brand-new high school and I, you know, I felt like it was an awesome experience. And I, it was a built, middle school and high school, and they built it in the same spot. And I remember it being a really big deal. It's a small, it was a small town, Hamilton, Monum, and people were worried about the traffic. And it was just such a hub, and it, it truly is my foundation in education, and it was. Every teacher was passionate. Everybody was there. It was just a really wonderful place to be.
Having had a ceiling tile that was soaked with rainwater from a leaking roof fall on my head during art class, I can attest. It, no, it was, it was terrible. I have our air quality tested because our, it was just, it was bad. I don't want that for my kids.
No, yeah, so we gotta move forward, right?
We will all remember at my high school that the Spanish word for snow is nieve from when it was snowing in our Spanish class from the roof coming.
Inside the classroom.
Inside the classroom.
Wow, these are some special stories.
And I'd say that, you know, one of the things that I'd want to convey is that I, to the point that was made by during the public speak portion of the meeting, is that it really isn't just because of the age of the building. I mean, Towne Long Meadow invests in its school buildings. Right now, we're in, you know, taking a look at a roof project at Center School, a chiller replacement at Wolf Swamp, a window project at Center School. So this town is committed to the ongoing maintenance of its building, but we're talking about buildings here that, the challenges go way beyond what even the best maintenance effort, you know, the community could possibly make. It simply has to be in participation with the MSBA, I would say.
Are there any other committee members that would like to make a comment or have a question? Otherwise, we do have a recommended motion on our agenda about the town warrant article.
I move that the school committee formally support a yes vote on the warrant article on the September 9th, 2025 town meeting, warrant article pertaining to the middle school project.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, so we'll vote now. Adam?
Yay.
Jamie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
And it's a yes for me too. Okay, so moving to our next agenda item, we have building use request. So there's a consent agenda that consists of three building use requests.
I'm happy to address them. There are three requests, as Michaela mentioned, as part of your consent agenda. One is from the Blueberry Hill PTO for a school trunk-or-treat event on Friday, October 24th in the Blueberry Hill parking lot with a rain date of Saturday, October 25th. The second request is from the Long Meadow Football Booster Club for use of the concession stand to sell concessions during the Long Meadow youth football games on Saturdays of August 30th, September 6th and 27th, and October 11th. And then the third request that is part of the consent agenda is a request from the Parks and Rec Department for use of the Glenbrook gym for a co-ed basketballs, skills, and drills activity for grades three through eight. These would be Tuesday evening from, starting on Saturday the 16th through November 4th from 6:30 to 8:30 PM.
Okay, so just a reminder that in a consent agenda, we're voting on all of them altogether. So if you have something to say about one and you don't want it to be in the consent agenda, say something now. No, I think we're good to move on to a motion for the cons, yep?
Yeah, just one point. These were not reviewed by finance sub, so the motion should not reference. They were recommended. We have not yet to review any building use.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I move that the school committee approve the consent agenda for the August 19th, 2025 school committee meeting as presented.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Adam?
Yay.
Jamie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
And a yes for me too. So next up on our agenda is a request for sponsorship recognition banners. And earlier tonight during public speak, that's what William Welch was speaking about with the football team.
Yeah, I can quickly address it, and I know Dr. O'Shea might want to add something. So Mr. Welch was here representing the Long Meadow Football Booster Club. They are requesting permission to hang banners during youth and JV football games on the stadium field. There are various dates, starting on August 30th, running through the end of October. I think based on conversations with Dr. O'Shea, I'm not really sure this falls under the policy of building use, but we felt that it's kind of outside of what we've normally seen in terms of requests, and so there might be some other policies that kind of might touch upon this type of request. So I think Dr. O'Shea had some additional information to share with the committee.
Yeah, in, in his message to you, I think, Mr. Welch, it said that the request didn't really implicate any LPS policies. I think I'd agree with that. I think it's, it's probably something that could be approved under your existing policies relating to gifts to schools or advertising. relating to, um, gifts to schools or advertising. It's a, it's a promotional recognition, um, so a way to recognize, um, some local businesses that have supported, uh, Long Meadow, uh, football. And so, um, it's something that, Mr. Welch has indicated, that it's sort of a, a short-term in duration. This wouldn't be a permanent fixture, it would just be during the season. So I'll, I most liken it to the advertising that you might see in a yearbook or in a, um, flyer for a musical performance or a play. So it's a way just to, um, thank the entities that support, uh, Long Meadow Youth Football. So, um, certainly if you want to approve it or consider it as a building use request, that's certainly something you can do. Or, um, your existing policies would, I would say, would allow me to approve it, um, one way or another. So, and it has my, I would recommend its approval. It's something that I would support, given the, sort of the parameters that are around, uh, hanging this promotional banner.
So this would be all local businesses?
Local, um, and we do have some language in your, in your policy manual around, um, the, you know, the tastefulness of it and the, um, you know, what's, what can be advertised and what can't be advertised. So there's some boundaries that we would have to adhere to.
So sometimes in, um, like, music, you know, uh, and, and yearbook flyers, individuals also can take out, would we allow that or not allow that?
I wouldn't see that, um, like, I wouldn't, I don't see that as something, it hasn't come up.
It's not in our policy right now.
To allow for individual recognition of donations, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's currently not in our, in that policy.
Yeah.
We talked about how it had to be, like, appropriate for a school, that's in the policy.
Right. And, and I think, you know, it would be my intention to make sure that the fencing didn't become filled with the banners, that we would want to do this in a tasteful, understated way that kind of matches community norms, so.
Have we looked at the town ordinance on sizing of advertising and how that would be applicable to? You know, because I know that, like, for example, for like, any political signs or anything like that, they're, they're very strict. I didn't realize they were so strict, but, you know, have we, would we be subject to those, uh, guidelines?
I can double-check on that, but I'm, I'm thinking with this being the stadium field, and I'm looking at Mr. Mazza, that the, the, those ordinances, uh, I'm thinking, would apply to Wolf Swamp, Russell Field, but with it being the stadium field, it would be more in the purview of the school committee? Is that fair?
Yeah, and we might want to at least consider what the parameters are for the advertising that I think the town approved for those other fields to see if we can kind of get something that fits within the scope that's allowable to those, those playgrounds or.
Just because it says, I mean, tasteful, but it's kind of open-ended. And I know that the town, it's very strict, and I don't want us to carry any burden from that.
And is there, um, in our current policy, uh, because I feel like we talked about this policy a lot last year, is, is there a current size that's?
I don't, I don't believe so. And I think that's what we would probably need to set in terms of the approval of this, that it meets certain requirements that are set maybe within either town guidelines or bylaws.
But we could kind of put that in the motion to say, adhere into the town bylaws, you know, that it, that could be a conditional approval.
So it, it, Picknelly Field is Springfield, so that, all that signage that's there is, it would have, fall under different jurisdictions, right?
Yeah, I mean, they have a completely different, I'm just kidding.
Pardon me?
Yeah.
Completely what?
I'm just making jokes.
Yeah, Tom, do you view this as a building use request? Because I, I read it, I, it's a building use request, and my vantage point, it really shouldn't fall under policies. If building is used properly, we have the ability to stop the use of it. You know, if it isn't, if it isn't kind of meeting what we want.
I think we always have the right to withdraw an approved building use permit if it's not adhering to the requirements or the policy that, I mean, I do agree, Jamie, I don't think it's under building use, but I understand why Mr. Welch submitted it this way. There's not really a mechanism, I think, to go about, um, asking approval for this. So I think he used this as a way to kind of bring it forward and try to gain support.
Got it. Yeah, I, I personally look at it as a building use. I, I don't necessarily have an issue for what it's for, the purpose of it, to benefit the students of LHS. It's kind of the only mechanism to get them to where they want to go right now. I think that over time, we need to continue to kind of review this as a, as a, you know, committee and future committees to, you know, as I've said before, pulling some of these costs in to help manage this better versus having, you know, boosters handle all this. But this is kind of the only way for them to get this done right now for the benefit of the student athlete. So I'm all for benefiting student athlete. I look at this as a building use request, too, and just go, you know, and if it doesn't fit what our policies are, you know, then we have the ability to kind of go, hey, this doesn't work anymore. And just like if someone came here and made a mess of our facilities, guess what? You're not using it anymore. You know, I think that'll kind of keep them in line with what we want, so. So I don't personally have an issue with it and view it that way.
Thank you, Jamie. And I mean, I agree, and I think what, um, William Welch said earlier, too, like, it, it's worth giving it a try if we have to come back and say this wasn't working. But this is something that I know has been a challenge for student athletes since I've started on the school committee. So I think trying to improve this challenge for the student athletes is worth trying something new and giving them what they need to succeed.
Good.
Anyone else? Do we have a motion?
I move that the school committee approve of the displaying of said sponsorship recognition banners along the perimeter of the Long Meadow High School football field as outlined within the building request and in adherence with town bylaws. Oh, as outlined in the building request dated August 7th, 2025, for William Welch, president of Long Meadow Football, and in adherence with town bylaws.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Ooh, two seconds. Adam?
Yay!
Jamie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
And a yes for me, too. I think that leaves us with one final motion.
All right. I move that the school committee meet in executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose 3.
Pardon me, I, I apologize for interrupting. Did we vote on the consent agenda then for the other motion?
No.
Did we?
Yeah, we.
I don't.
I think we did.
Did they?
For which one?
The consent agenda on the other three.
I apologize for interrupting. I just wanted to clarify this point of order.
No, I think all of us were.
Yes.
I just, I must have gone, I, I apologize. Not enough talk.
Maybe I forgot, but I feel like this one would go.
I thought we did. So it's been a long day.
Good, good. Actually. Good, okay. I just had a small stroke.
Thank you for being thorough.
I'm okay. Sorry for interrupting. I had such great momentum, too.
I move that the school committee meet in executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose 3, litigation, Purpose 7, approval of minutes, and not to reconvene into open session.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Great. Adam?
Yay!
Jamie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
And a yes for me, too. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Have a great night.
Good start to the school year.
I just had a senior.